All right. This meeting of the Board of Education for September 10th, 2012 is called to order. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. All items that we've voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. This meeting has been televised live and will replay throughout the next two weeks. Please check the board website for replay times. First on the agenda, we have citizen comment. Ms. Houston, is there anybody signed up for citizen comment?
Yes, we have six. Our first two, Tom Sinsek and Mike Verbout.
Now, although I know that Mike has been here before, I'm going to go ahead and read the instructions, given I don't know the other folks that are going to be testifying, whether they've been here before or not. Our responsibility is to board listen actively, listening and reflect on the thoughts and opinions of others. The board will not respond to any comments or questions at this time, but will follow up on various issues that are raised. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration when referring to board members, staff, and other presenters. You have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name. During the first two minutes of your testimony, a green light will appear. When you have one minute remaining, a yellow light will go on, and when your time is up, the red light will go on and a buzzer will sound. We respectfully ask you that you conclude your comments at that time. We sincerely appreciate your input and thank you in advance for your cooperation. Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Good to see you. Mike Verbout, V. like in Victor, E.R.B.O.U.T. Some of you might remember the little learning village that we talked about a little back. So I sort of have tried to stay engaged with that little group because it's amazing how many similarities that group has to some of the things that we're engaged with. They had a go-to their listening groups, you know, meetings and stuff like that, similar to ours. Some of the common characteristics, I think, that this small village, even in a big kingdom, was that they shared strongly the value of the process of inclusivity. They believed in grassroots efforts and the collective wisdom that resulted from grassroots efforts. The commitment to input from all of the villagers, and particularly some that might be classified as disenfranchised. You might remember the condition of some of the schools. In the little village, I visited their school of excellence, and I was shocked to find that in front of the highly visible spot, there were all these dumpsters lined up. And I thought, well, that's kind of unusual for a school of excellence. But come to find out that the boiler room that housed all the boilers and the little chimney up there, they had to move the dumpsters because the traffic and the trucks and things coming back and forth made it unsafe that the chimney might fall over. So they moved the dumpsters. And then I kind of wondered about what happened to the rest of the people who weren't dumpsters because obviously those kind of facilities are dangerous. So it's nice that we're addressing those kind of facility concerns. The villagers also had a clear educational vision. They valued and were eager to embrace transformation of the young people's education. I think that's important from my standpoint, that being a proud member of our Portland, our schools, OPUS, is that we're really committed to the long range of the transformation of our Portland Public Schools and that we readily find out that to embrace that transformation, you need to have a bond and you need to get that bond passed. But that is one part of the project of making sure that we transform our schools through that. They are indeed our schools, and as the community and the individual neighborhoods are prepared to be meaningfully involved in the transformation of our schools, it's also important to keep continuing the address of our trust and our transparency, our accountability. Those are issues that still continue to be issues that need to be addressed. It's important that as we put together advisory -- oh, my goodness. Well, I guess that just takes care of that. I'll sign up at another time to finish the story.
We'll look forward to hearing it. Thank you.
Our next speakers, Rita Moore and Roger Krishner.
Mike, is that your case?
Hi, my name is Rita Moore, M-O-O-R-E, and I'm going to start off apologizing. I haven't had time to really put thoughts on paper, so if I'm a little scattered, forgive me. I wanted to comment on the draft charter for the Citizen Accountability Committee. And the first thing I wanted to say was, thank you for issuing this. I appreciate that the committee is clearly intended to be a really robust accountability mechanism. And I think that's going to be critically important for how things play out over time. Having said that, I do have some questions and some comments that you might, that I would ask you to consider as you go forward. So the first thing is, I think we need to be clear about what the purpose of the Accountability Committee is. And it seems to me that it has a dual function, at least two. It's a formal monitoring mechanism for progress in the projects and reporting out. It's also a trust-building opportunity. And in fact, since this is coming out prior to the bond, to the election, this is actually the first opportunity to demonstrate that PPS is going to be transparent, efficient, effective, and is going to employ mechanisms to do internal quality control and continuous And also to be transparent. And I would argue that in order for the public to believe that the accountability, that PPS is going to be fulfilling these, that the process by which you create the Accountability Committee also needs to represent those characteristics. So I would urge you to be, to create a process for appointment of members of the committee that's really transparent and really makes clear why people are being appointed, and who they are, why they're being appointed, and what is it that they bring to the table that makes them the best people? Because I think there's going to be some pushback from communities. The other thing, I guess, is, I know I'm going to run out of time. I would just like to second the suggestions made by my colleague Stuart Emmons in an email that he sent to you. Basically, his suggestion was that PPS think about creating not just one committee, but two. One to do, to be a technical advisory committee, the other to be a strategic advisory committee. And I urge you to read the email because he explains it very well. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Roger Krishner. I'm the co-president of the PTA at Franklin High School. I'm essentially here as an amen chorus tonight to, for my fellow OPUS members, and I will trust that the board representatives that have been serving as liaison to our group will convey the sentiments that have been expressed at our meetings. I want to echo the concern about community involvement in this Accountability Committee. And I want to caution that we have a problem. We want to do this well, but at the same time, we can't afford to take a great deal of time before we show results to our voters if we wish to ever get subsequent bond measures passed. And as at Franklin, in that we're one of the first victims or first candidates to enjoy a total renovation, I want to echo the board's promise to us that citizens at our school will be involved with the technical folks as the designs go forth. They are looking forward to that participation. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Joshua Curtis. That's C-U-R-T-I-S. I'm a member of our Portland, our schools, and I also serve as co-chair of the Northeast Coalition of Neighborhood Schools Committee. And I'm also a member of the Jefferson Cluster Enrollment Balancing Committee. And from this work, I've had the really enjoyable opportunity to speak with families and community members about their schools. And I think you'd be really pleased to hear that most people are very pleased with their schools. They'll acknowledge they're not perfect, but they're very happy with their teachers or principals, the staff of the schools. And they have great things to say about what's going on. However, when it comes to discussing the Portland Public School District, a lot of people have a decidedly different opinion. However much they appreciate what's going on in their school building and their children's classroom, they simply don't trust the school district. And there are a number of reasons for this. Some of them go back years from before any of you were on the school board. And I think one of the things that I find talking with them is, they actually really want to be able to trust the district. They really want to be able to trust the board members. They want to be able to trust the people at the district. And they oftentimes trust individuals, but somehow when the individuals get put together into bureaucracy, they can, they find that trust wanting. And I hope that Portland Public Schools uses the upcoming facilities bond as an opportunity to build that trust, both in the campaign and hopefully in the implementation of the bond, which is, I think, unquestionably necessary. And I think the Citizen Accountability Committee that you'll discuss later this evening can play a really important role in building that trust. And while it's important that members of that committee comprise a mix of individuals with good reputations in their community for fairness, transparency, and people with a combination of experience in building design, construction, financing, contracting, budgeting, and auditing, I think there's some other skills that are also important. The members of the committee need to have a proven record of being able to engage and communicate with the public and with the various communities within Portland. Even if they're able to get all of the numbers right, even if all the financing is wonderful, they've got the right materials, if the communication and engagement isn't there in a real two-way dialogue where they both hear from the public and share their technical expertise, that trust isn't going to get built. And I think that trust is hugely important and necessary for all of the children in Portland to be able to get the excellent education they deserve. And so I hope you really are thinking about that when discussing the charter. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Scott Bailey with our Portland, our schools. Thanks for being here tonight. So a couple of things. We can file these under half-digested ideas, come out of our discussion. And you've heard some of them already, the ATAC and ASAC, Technical Advisory Committee and maybe a Strategic Advisory Committee that Stuart has written on. Really think through how this, these committees or this committee, whatever, communicates with the public. Can there be a construction project dashboard that sort of gives easily accessible information on how's the project going, is it on time, is it on budget, those kind of things? Ooh, more dry rot than we thought, costs go up, kind of thing. Third is, I think the resolution calls for quarterly meetings of the committee. And I know that's at a minimum, but it has to be more than that to really get the job done. When we ran this by construction folks in OPUS, it was like, gee, we're not sure that seven people is enough, and quarterly meetings way not enough to get the job done. And finally, there's this, getting back to educational vision. If educational vision is going to be part of going forward and how we get the job done, then it would seem like we need to hit the ground running with the vision process the day after the election, which means we need to start planning that now. If that, if that's the right way to go, we would need to start planning that now, that PPS would need to reach out to key partners now to begin that discussion for how we're going to pull this off. And I forgot my notes back at the office, so that's going to have to do for tonight. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hey. The light didn't go on.
You're doing better. We certainly appreciate it. Yeah, don't take that one. Anybody else signed up right now?
No.
All right. Again, thank you all for who testified tonight, and we're going to be moving on to the, our next item. Portland Federation of School Professionals. At this time, the board will hear a presentation for the Portland Federation of School Professionals. I'd like to remind fellow board members that the contract between PPS and PFSP allows any and time to present on the board agenda. This presentation this evening is not a hearing. The board will be voting on resolution later on this evening in our business agenda, I'm sorry. Due to the confidential nature of the personal matters, the board will not discuss this matter in open session. Belinda, welcome, PFSP president.
Thank you. Belinda Regan, R-E-A-G-A-N. Good evening, Carolyn, school board members. It's nice to be here tonight to see you. However, I have to tell you, it truly disheartens me that I'm facing you again, filled with such frustration so soon after our last encounter a couple of weeks ago. Once more, a classified employee has been wronged by the Human Resources Department of Portland Public Schools. And while my original intent tonight was to plead his case to each of you, I truly believe that these pleas go unheard. However, I feel a duty to tell you why. First, if I may, let me quickly explain the grievance process that our employees face whenever there is a contract violation on the part of a district representative. Our goal is always to resolve these issues informally if possible. However, if that's not achievable, formal grievances are initiated in two tiers at step one. If not then resolved, they're moved to step two, which consists of a hearing. In the past, these step-two grievance hearings were heard by neutral parties, generally an administrator not working directly with Labor Relations. While these hearings seldom favored the union, after all, it was a district-paid administrator reviewing the case and making the decision, I do actually recall a complaint about five years ago that was fairly settled in the union's favor at a step-two hearing that we held. For the past two years, this method has narrowed, and today, after grievances are presented to the Director of Labor Relations and denied at the second part of step one, that same Director of Labor Relations becomes the hearings officer at the step-two level. While he may vehemently claim that he can make an unbiased determination, in the case that he's already denied, these claims are, of course, once again denied. The third level of a grievance is the point at which I now sit before you, the superintendent and the school board. At this juncture, the Director of Labor Relations, after having made his pro-employer decision at all earlier levels of the grievance, comes to you, Superintendent Smith, and makes a recommendation how this grievance vote by the board should be made. Never have I personally known of an instance in which the superintendent has not followed the Director of Labor Relations' recommendation. After this third rejection, the union's only recourse is to move on to arbitration, a tremendously costly, time-consuming process, so very unnecessary in most cases. After several years of managing to find common ground prior to filing formal grievances, it seems now that is the attitude of the current Labor Relations Director, that arbitration is the path that all grievances must take. I find this to be a reprehensible approach to conflict resolution and incredibly damaging to the relationship between PFSP and PPS. At the August 20th school board meeting, Michelle Batten and I presented concerns regarding a grievance on behalf of our member who was wrongly disciplined in an evaluation. With nary a word regarding the facts that we presented, rather than making a decision based on balanced information, the board ratified the business agenda, including the matter of our erred-upon employee, thus sanctioning the denial originated and perpetuated by the Director of Labor Relations through one-sided tainted information. In reviewing tonight's board agenda last Friday, we were horrified to discover that the matter brought before you tonight by the Director of Labor Relations in regard to another PFSP-represented employee was posted publicly on the PPS board website with the name of the grievance splattered across two pages, together with highly opinionated remarks from the Labor Relations Director disparaging this excellent employee's skills and falsely characterizing his lack of abilities. While General Counsel's responding email assured us that this item would be removed from the website, and it was, we can't help but wonder how many others besides ourselves curious about this evening's agenda had occasion to read this blatant misrepresentation of an always-valued employee? How horrendous for this employee to suffer this sort of indignity and public humiliation, particularly now while he remains in a partially laid-off status. I believe that this matter you will vote on tonight is not truly just a case of a more skilled employee retaining a position rather than the most senior worker, as you have heard. It is what is referred to by many arbitrators, in our opinion, as a coaching thing. By approving this resolution to deny the grievance tonight, as I have no doubt you will, you are enabling this inequitable practice of giving preference through an exemption, again approved by that same Labor Relations Director, to those in coaching positions in our high schools under the guise of special skills. So tonight, I simply ask that you stop and carefully consider the ramifications of continuing this practice of rubber-stamping every matter that is brought to you by the Labor Relations Department without first considering both sides of each case in a truly impartial manner. I must say that it's exasperating that it appears that the board determines its verdict in these grievance matters long before hearing the facts as the grievant sees them, resulting in prejudiced pronouncements. I promise you that I will be returning to this table to speak with you regarding every single grievance that I believe deserves your full attention. So keep this seat warm. Our classified employees are worthy of being heard. Thank you.
Thank you again. We now move on to the, an update on the charter school process. Superintendent Smith, would you like to introduce this item?
I would, and I'll ask Sueann Higgins and Kristin Miles. Sueann is our chief academic officer, and Kristin Miles is our charter school manager. And there was some work done over the past year, really looking at our charter processes and refining them. And Kristin's going to walk us through how the process will work this year.
Great. Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to update you on a couple of things. One, as Superintendent Smith just said, on our annual processes. And then another on a situation that we're currently going through in our charter office. So this year, we-
Just for the record, you're Kristin Miles?
I'm Kristin Miles. I'm the charter schools manager. This year, we had seven letters of intent to apply from charter school applicants, which resulted in three applications, which we received on July 15th. Of those three applications, two were determined to be complete, so they moved on to the review phase, which is where they are now, being read by a panel of staff members. They are both, they both have high school components. One is Rise Academy, a 912 proposal with 250 students focused on RTI, blended learning, and STEM education. And the other is Ready Public Charter School, brought to us by the Portland Rehabilitation Center, which is proposed to be a 612, 350 students with a focus on career paths of engineering and design and environmental sustainability. So to work through the hearings and the review processes at the board level, we made a number of recommendations, which include that a panel of three board members would form the charter hearing panel. As we have only two applicants this year, it's our hope that it can be the same three board members for both. But if not, if that's not possible, then our hope is that at least one liaison will be on both reviews. This, the hearings must be completed statutorily by October 5th, so the board office will be working to schedule these hearings as soon as practical. After the hearings, I would plan to brief the panel or the liaison and then draft a memo to the full board to reflect the substance of the hearings, which you would receive prior to the study session at which you would discuss the applications, along with an updated staff review report on the applications. At the study session, the applicants would receive brief presentation time. I would provide a process and timeline update, and then the board liaison would report out about the substance of the hearings, and at that time, the board would receive the superintendent's recommendation. Following that study session, the full board would vote on the applications in the next regular meeting. In other news, we have no charter school renewals this year, so there will be no renewal hearings or board votes on renewals. So that's the update on the process. And then I wanted to update you on where we stand with our contract negotiations with Portland Village right now.
Do you have questions now?
Sure.
Or do you want to wait until you're finished?
On the process first, no?
Okay.
You jump first.
So I just had a couple of-
My soap on my left, right side.
Jumping in front of you. I just had a couple of questions, Kristin, and this comes out of the process last year, which I was not on either of the-
That's why she's going to lead this effort.
But I remember-
This year.
But no, she is not. But I do remember some of the problems that came out of how we did it last year. And the one thing that I would suggest to you is, after you put together a draft memo, you need to send it to the people who were on that group who reviewed that because you want to make sure that they agree with what you're putting forth before it comes to the board. I think we had a few little issues with that last year. And then the only other thing I had was October 5th is three weeks away. It seems a little late to get going on that. Trying to find a time for board members. And then I guess my other question is, why are you, why do you want the same three people or one person to be on this?
Generally, it's easier when there has been a committee or a same panel doing all of the hearings. But just our feeling is that at least one person who's done both that can report out about the whole process and just be consistent over that is generally helpful. Maybe those who've been involved can speak to that.
I would agree. I think that last year, we had different groups, and the groups just naturally asked different questions, have different priorities than the rest. And so I think if you want to have some consistency, especially if these are both essentially high school applications, then it gives us a little bit more credibility as we're going through the process, I think. But it doesn't have to be. But I think it, last year, it felt like it would have been helpful to do that. When do we have to finalize this whole process? When do we have to approve or disapprove? What's the deadline?
I think we're planning for meetings in November right now.
To finalize it? So there's, there isn't a statute that says you have to be done by-
About the charter school applications to-
Yeah, when do we have to be done with the whole thing?
So we have, we have to hold the hearings back October 5th, and then after that, within 30 days, the board has to vote. So generally, what we do, because your board meetings are not scheduled around those times, we generally get short waivers to hear those at already scheduled board meetings. So whatever board meetings, whatever study sessions and regular meetings happen around that time is what we'll aim for.
It must be a little longer than that. If the meetings have to happen by October 5th, and we're not going to discuss them until November 19th, must be more than a month that we have.
That's what we would get the waiver for, is that timeline.
So the question before us is that do we have three board members that are willing to serve on both of the hearings?
And I would, I would normally, I would actually normally volunteer, but with all of the work we're doing this fall on the bond and the rest, that's why I was asking about the timing, if it could be pushed- If it could be pushed back to after November 6th, I'd be happy to be on the whole thing. But I'm not sure I can commit to both before that or either. So.
And this can be held on Saturdays, is that correct?
I don't think so. I mean, we've never scheduled that the way before.
How long does it take? How long does it take?
They're generally scheduled for two hours each. Having two, we could do both in one day.
Yeah.
But you also need to do all the prep.
Didn't we already pick three people to do this when we were doing our, mapping our work for the year?
I think we had last year's crew, and I don't think we ever picked a charter.
The charter group?
We just need to follow up and do a scheduling.
Yeah, we'll figure out. We'll reach out to you guys and figure out who it is.
Right. So you will get three people by the end of the week, I guess.
Great. Okay, so the next is the negotiation process that we're going through with Portland Village right now. So as you know, the board approved a flexible five-year renewal of Portland Village contract last spring, and we engaged in negotiations with them shortly afterward. And while we've been successfully able to negotiate all other items, Portland Village has contested our right as a district to impose an enrollment cap in its contract. We, as you know, feel strongly that the statute allows us to negotiate this critical item, and we, for instance, know that ODE has enrollment caps and other districts do as well. We've extended Portland Village's contract by amendment four times to allow more time for negotiation, but we've not been able to come to an agreement on this point. Their contract then expired on September 4th, and Portland Village has informed us that they do intend to appeal the enrollment cap provision. So what this does is place them in non-renewal specifically for the purpose, or for the reason that we could not come to an agreement on a contract. And so then the following steps apply. We sent them a notice of non-renewal on the day after their contract expired, so on September 5th, and they then have 30 days to appeal to us, well, 30 days after receiving that notice. We, after receiving their appeal, if they do appeal to us, we will then have 45 days in which to hold a board hearing about their request to consider, reconsider the enrollment cap. Within 20 days of that hearing, the board would then need to vote on the request. If the board denies the request at that point, Portland Village then has 30 days to appeal to the state for a review of the decision. And the state would either uphold this board's decision or remand it back for consideration. It would not be an appeal to them for sponsorship. So that's where we are now. As I said, we sent them that notice on September 5th, so we haven't received anything back from them about an appeal, but we do expect to receive something in that 30-day time period. So I'm happy to answer questions about that process as well.
I think the process is pretty clear. I mean, it's just a question of timing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we're moving on to bond readiness. At previous meetings, you know, we talked about Citizen Accountability Committee and charter timeline, so we received something already in the mail, Superintendent Smith. I take it they're already on cue that two present here, so CJ Sylvester, Chief Operations Officer, and Jim Owens, Director of Capital Operations, are here to present.
Thank you. Jim's going to address this item this evening, and I'll be available for any questions you may have.
Good evening, Board. I'm Jim Owens from the Office of School Modernization, joined by CJ Sylvester, Chief Operating Officer, to answer any questions after we complete our topic on bond readiness, which actually includes two subcomponents. First, the Citizen Accountability Committee Charter, and then secondly, a timeline for several planned capital improvements that staff is looking at for the summer of 2013. I want to point out that the work that staff has done in this regard is very provisional, and it reflects some preliminary thinking. Obviously, the voters have, voters have in front of them a bond measure on November the 6th, and will make a decision relative to outcome. So much of the information that we're presenting tonight is really very, very preliminary. Board Resolution 4640 was approved by the board on August 20th, and authorized the superintendent to take any actions necessary to place the $482 million capital construction bond measure on the November 6 election ballot. This was actually accomplished on August the 21st with the elections officer of Multnomah County, and so it's now known as Ballot Measure 26-144. The resolution also authorized superintendent to develop a charter for a Citizen Accountability Committee that would be presented to the board for action. So tonight, what you have in front of you in your board packages is a staff-prepared draft charter for your review and discussion. Based on your discussion and feedback, staff plans to bring the charter back to you at the board meeting on the 24th of September with an authorizing resolution to approve it and designate the membership. So tonight, no specific action is recommended, but discussion is certainly encouraged. The draft charter describes the committee charge, membership, and operations. It's consistent with a ballot measure summary and explanatory statement, which requires an independent group of citizens from the community to review quarterly reports and annual audits of how the bond dollars are being spent to provide accountability to the public until construction phase work is complete. The Citizen Accountability Committee would consist of six members and a chair, so for a total of seven members, and would report in advisory capacity directly to the school board. They would assist the board in monitoring the planning and progress of the proposed bond program relative to voter-approved work scopes, schedule, and budget objectives. Staff has specifically addressed ethics consideration in the charter to ensure that conflicts of interests are avoided within the Accountability Committee. This time, I'd like to answer any questions that you may have on the draft charter.
Charlie's. You wanted to go to my right now.
Your questions?
I think it'd be good to have a discussion about issues that were raised earlier by the folks from our Portland R schools, because I thought they made some excellent points. So I don't know if we want to discuss that amongst ourselves, or have a discussion with staff, or how we want to, how we want to do that. I really appreciated just the whole careful way this is drafted around the ethics and the conflict of interest. It was really, really solid and well done, so that was excellent. So I think it would just be the question of whether there would be an adjunct, additional, some, some other way to expand it to ensure that there's broad community representation. But this is really, really solid. I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Just had a question, I think it's for you and one of you guys, directly related to what Booth is talking about. I understand that this has to do with what we've said we're going to do within the ballot measure, and is, as I think Stuart's email says, a technical kind of thing. My understanding was that there are going to be a multitude of opportunities for public input and involvement around the schools themselves as we get to design phase and those kinds of things. Can you speak to that a little bit and give us a broad idea of, I know this is really early, the bond hasn't passed yet, but it will soon, so can you just give us a broad idea about what you're thinking about or what you're going to bring to us?
There are actually a number of opportunities for the community to comment on how the work is being structured and how it's being planned and managed. It actually starts very early on with work that connects to the visioning of our, of our facilities, how does the built environment support program and curriculum. It extends into a phase of that work, which is, we call the Educational Specifications, the EdSpec, which really provides on an overarching level how the district characterizes its instructional space as well as core facility needs. So that process will engage a large segment in the community that will inform staff relative to what, what space looks like in the school district. If, depending on the outcome on November 6th, the bond moves forward, then there are a number of other opportunities through design advisory committees, which would be specific to the four major full modernization projects, the three high schools and Fabian. There's many opportunities to engage throughout the planning and design phase of the projects, starting out early with master planning, moving into schematic design, design development, and then during the course of the construction, opportunities for public, public input. It appears that in looking at the total engagement, there's, there's significant opportunity, and of course, this on top of the work that the Citizen Accountability Committee would provide to, to you, the school board, relative to the progress of the program and the, and the planning and design work. So there appears to be significant amount of attention being, being put towards this. Does that answer your question fully?
I think so. So just to follow up a little bit on it, each one of these opportunities is one that we will provide notice to the public. And are we forming committees? Are we having a public hearing? Are we, or how do you envision that? Or I guess I should always say, what are you bringing forward to us to approve for that process?
Jim mentioned the fact that for each one of the four major full modernizations or replacements, in the case of Fabian, we will have a design advisory group that's unique to each one of those projects, so will include school administration, teachers, staff, business, and community leaders from the neighborhood. So there will be an advisory group around each one of the full modernizations. And then that advisory group will assist the design team and staff in working through, first, the master planning, which if you may recall through the Marysville process with the first bond, when we were going for a full modernization of Marysville rather than the insurance rebuild that we're doing, we're currently doing, we had a series of design charrettes where the public's involved, and they come in and they talk about what it is they'd like to see in the building, what kind of services, what are the attributes they want to see. And the design team then takes that material as influenced by the educational specs further, because we're getting ready to initiate that process, and brings back a variety of concepts for the public to comment on. And again, the public's involved in deciding which ones are the concepts they like and what are the pieces and parts effectively through this design charrette process. And it's very hands-on, it's very graphic, and that ultimately becomes the design that gets built into the construction document phase. And through Marysville, I know this predates some of you on the board, there were a couple of times when we came to the board itself and said, this is the schematic design that's under consideration based on the community input we've got, had, what do you think of it? And the same thing happened at design development for, for Marysville at that time. So there's a relationship between staff and the, and the design team, between staff, the design team, and the community, and between all three of us and the Board of Education. And that would be happening on all four of those projects.
Thank you, CJ.
So I don't know if that, I think that answers your question, but I don't know if it necessarily gets to what some of the, some of our testimony has been in the past around the design and the partnership that could be created and support sort of the educational intention of these, these projects, which I think is something that's really appealing to me. And I mean, this is more of a comment than a question, so don't think you have to answer. But, but I think we're, there is an opportunity in that process for community engagement and for sort of more of an academic engagement that, that could really be beneficial to the students who are involved or students throughout the district.
Was that part of the process during Marysville?
I think I need a little bit of clarification, because when you said academic, I didn't realize initially that you were talking about students. You're talking about the ability of students to participate in the process.
Right. I'm just sort of repeating what others have testified in the past.
In fact, the equity and public contracting policy that the board adopted in August of this year requires that we do that. And we have requests for proposals and requests for qualifications out now that have that written into it in very clear form, that in fact, internships, job shadowing, career fairs, all of those things need to be part and parcel of any work as we move forward. And so it's going to be, it'll be a learning process for all of us involved, but the intention is that it in fact be very robust.
Thank you, CJ.
I would also add that relative to the, the design phase, that students would be given an opportunity to actually intern in the architects, engineers' offices, which I think would be very instructive. A number of firms in the local Portland community are very accustomed to having students there to observe the work. And I think in looking at how we would approach it, we would certainly envision doing that and increase the student engagement.
Is the expectation in terms of the Citizen Accountability Committee that these would all be publicly noticed meetings, so public could attend any of these, and there would be public commentary as each of them?
Yes.
Correct.
That's helpful. So when I originally looked at the list you gave us of the potential folks who could serve on, who might serve on this committee, I was, I was pretty wowed by their backgrounds, the diversity of their backgrounds and the rest. My initial thought still, though, was I'd like to have one or two community members as well as these, you know, incredibly technical folks on the committee, maybe even in part to help translate for us and for the public, you know, what we're talking about. I remember I was on the design team for Forest Park School when that was built way back when, and we had somebody who, who could do that, because sometimes these conversations become so technical that if you're in the public and you're trying to participate, you can, you can sometimes get lost. So my initial inclination with this was to maybe suggest that we increase it to nine people and have that as a possibility. But I also actually really like this idea that's been presented by our Portland R schools, because again, I'm not sure necessarily that, that we can't have the experts do the technical and have others kind of looking at the broader picture. So I'm, I would love to have more discussion about kind of where we're going with this and how it's going to work. I don't believe that our Portland R schools and their recommendation to us was specifically looking at the design of individual schools. I, I think there's a pretty clear understanding, there's going to be, you know, great design teams with lots and lots of community engagement at that level. I think they're talking about kind of the bigger picture, that 1.5 million we set aside to have the, the big conversation and how that's going to happen, and, you know, how you really communicate and continue to do partnering, continue to do outreach with the community, and who's, who's going to be doing that piece or how's that going to happen. So I think to me, that's, that's sort of what they're asking us here, and I'm not sure I, I completely know how that piece is going to happen, so.
I guess some of it goes back a little bit to what I, what I heard Rita Moore ask, is what is the purpose, like what is our purpose for this group to do? And what I see is, as, as representatives of the citizenry, as people who spend time doing the background and doing the, the work, I see we're the ultimate accountability from citizens. So I can, I can have that level of detail. I can question whether or not this expenditure, that expenditure, were outside audited yearly, if not more often than that. So if there's misappropriation, that, that's caught pretty quickly, especially as part of an eight-year or 30-year bond. So when I think of purpose, what I'm, what I'm lacking is, is that a reasonable expenditure? Is that a reasonable overrun? Is that typical of this or that? And so when I saw this, that, that's kind of what excited about me, but again, that's my, and so then I, I get enticed, because I think anytime we can involve our community in more ways and help them see what's going on, whether that's the citizen budget review, I, I lean, I am also, I lean that way as well. But what is actually fresh in my mind is that when we put together this long-range facilities plan, which did fantastic work in a short amount of time, even then, who was chosen, who was on it, was questioned as to whether or not, were they really, oh, they're just backers of PPS? And I, it's one of those things where I keep chasing the, the right makeup, and I just come back to the amount of staff time that's going to be put on reporting monthly, if our Portland R schools wants it monthly. We continually cut central office. So I, that's, I guess that's where I land, that I, there's no doubt that structure, in fact, we could build in probably other more efficient structures, but I, I like this. I'm, I'm excited by this, so. I'm, I'm excited by this, so.
So let me follow up on somewhere along those lines. In just what I heard, I mean, part of the, the challenge that I'm having with the, with the, with the suggestions that were made tonight is not on, on the merits of, I think, what you say in regards to, you know, less encourage more public participation. I think clearly, I think what you outlined in regards to some of the, the project-specific, you know, stuff that is going to be there, I mean, there, there's definitely going to be that. I think that the fact that there's going to be opportunities for, for people to provide testimony, I think is also another indication of those things. But there is a fundamental thing that is here, I think, that is gets aired and expressed differently. And one is, is on, on the rebuilding of trust and, and, or lack thereof that people have. That's a more challenging thing, and I'm not sure that that's necessarily the, the charge of this committee. At least I didn't ambition it to be the charge of this committee to resolve. And, and in some ways, I think the suggestions that were made today is put a high burden on this committee to resolve. And, and I'm not sure that they're going to be able to, to deliver on that. And, and again, in fact, if you told me that, that that was the charge, I'm not sure that I would bow down to you for that. And I'm not sure that there'll be, you'll be that useful to me as a, myself as a board member. And again, as I think as, as Director Bill Lyle has stated, as elected by the public to try to, you know, kind of reflect on, on, on some of those opinions, would, would make a heck of a lot of difference. So I think that that's, that's the challenge that I have, I think, with some of the suggestions, that I think, you know, putting, putting that burden on, on this committee seems a bit heavy for me. The other part, and, and this is what I, I hear expressed, I think, with some of the testimony in regards to expectations, is if this committee has the, again, the sole responsibility for carrying out the work in terms of getting the job done, I think is the expressions that I keep hearing from people. I thought that we hire staff for that. I thought that we hire contractors to do that. And so let, we need to be clear about those things, because, you know, I think that, you know, construction companies, I think the, the staff can put together a dashboard in regards to the progress, come in, present it to the board and says, here's, here are the things, here are the deliverables, see what we said, here's what we said that we were going to do and didn't. This committee, I think, role is a little bit different in regards to looking at some very specific areas that need to be addressed and to make sure that we keep in within the spirit of what was intended in regards to the funds that were allocated or will be allocated to us, right? So that's why I think that I, in terms of some of the suggestions, although very interesting in regards to encouraging participation, trying to rebuild trust and those things, I'm not sure that they fell within the scope of this, of this committee, and, and I don't see it. The other part, and again, I mean, I think putting a whole lot into, into this committee, the whole visioning part, I think that, you know, Superintendent can speak more about the, the process and how committee, community people are also, also been involved in that process. So, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable, I think, with what was outlined already in regards to the charge for this committee. I'm not moved, honestly, you know, to, to do anything different, you know, even with the testimony that was presented tonight. I understand the, the concerns, but part of the thing is that we, at least, I can only speak for myself personally as a board member, I could benefit from, from the expertise that has been identified in regards to the composition of this committee for us in, in the very specific near future for it. If there are other things in regards to the, you know, what was, I think Bobby was mentioning in regards to the actual use of the, the funds, I think that we can begin to address once we get those, once we get those funds and once we get to look at that in regards to look at the actual plans that staff has for delivering and, and this, and distributing those funds or engaging people in, in those processes. But for this, I, I just don't see it, I, I just don't want to mix too many things and charge this, this committee or, or put, place the whole burden on this committee to deliver in regards to the building of trust. I think that's a matter for all of us, not only as board members, as staff, as parents, as community people, to be able to rebuild that. Because I think one of the, the folks that testify, you know, says, you know, there, there is something to build from. I mean, there is, at the sites, at the schools, there is certain level of support. We just need to make sure that, that translates into, into also for the rest of the, all the folks that are also working behind the scenes to deliver on the, on, on this effort. And, and sometimes that's not visible. And sometimes I think folks are not able to see, I think as Director Lyle mentioned, the, the impact that the cuts that are, that we have had already in terms of administrative are having on our ability to deliver. And I can honestly say, in terms of, if I was looking at the, all the staff that has come before me to, to present at this board, I've probably been most impressed with facilities and, and with your leadership in regards to these efforts, in terms of this, this programs.
Okay, thank you.
So because of the specificity of, of the presentation and actually even, I think, when we have delivered on things, capturing, I think, the essence of, of our concerns and, and putting it back to us to say, is this what I'm, what I'm hearing? And so, you know, again, I don't have the same level of, of mistrust, I should say, that others have expressed, not necessarily on this board, but that, that people are feeling, are putting out in terms of, and in particular, I think, around the, the construction projects, so.
So can I add a couple? One thing I do think would be helpful to add to this, I mean, just to make more explicit the public nature of the meetings, I know it's assumed and so.
It needs to be a little more clear in here that it's completely open to the public.
It does, it's just not.
Yeah, but it's, it says that the public, there can be public comment and that everything will be posted on the website. It's varies, I'm just saying to make it even more clear would be helpful. And I think this is a really strong charter and excellent, an excellent vision for the group, but even the, even the charge here that is mostly technical in nature does include some strategic and political pieces too. So I guess my hope would be that this is, this is a very solid core for this, for the oversight, but that we wouldn't close the door on potential additional, you know, whether it would be an official district committee, there could be one that's unofficial through our Portland, our schools, or the visioning process, or some other way for there to be kind of that strategic, both in terms of the educational vision, but also just the long-term plan for how we're going to continue to build support and move toward the next bond, which is beyond the scope of this, this very highly skilled technical group. And we kind, we need all of the above. So I think this is an excellent charter for that type of technical expertise and accountability in terms of is the money being spent, while are the projects being done right and so forth? But I, I would hope that we would keep the door open for the opportunity to have, you know, additional strategic advices. But I don't, I don't see that this closes the door on that at all. It just provides us with that really solid grounding and having reputable folks to advise us on, are we, is the money being spent well, are the projects being done right? And I really, again, really want to highlight the pieces around the memberships, the restrictions on not having any active or pending contracts with the district, you can't enter into a contract, there's a year period after you leave the committee in which you cannot have any business with the district. I really appreciate the way it's very explicit safeguards around who's going to serve on this committee and what, that it's, that the avoidance of all conflict of interest. So I think this is an excellent charter, but again, I do hope that we have, that we keep the door open for additional levels of, of advice and input from a broader group in the community.
I'm hoping that the people who were testifying before us tonight maybe thought this was their last and only opportunity, and that we have cleared that up tonight, because I think that there will be many, many opportunities from the visioning process to specific school design, to any number of other opportunities to participate and to help us. This is not something that the board can do on its own, it's not something this committee can do on its own. We need the community to help us with all of this work and certainly would never turn our back, I don't think, on, on the, on the community, because they are, they will make our school strong. So we want to make sure we are always engaged with them. And then also, I think I would echo Chair Gonzalez's comments and Chair, and Chair Bill Lyle's, both about staff and our capacity to do this work, and that, that in the end, on the bond and on these other things, the buck stops here with the board. We are the ultimate people who are responsible for this, and we have to answer back to our community. And so I, I don't want to put that responsibility off onto somebody else when we've been elected to do that. So I'm, I'm very comfortable with this. There were a couple of things that I just wanted to mention, I think it's on the second page, CJ. At the top of the page, it says the committee will receive and review copies of annual performance audits. I think we need to include something that says bond-related, so that that committee isn't receiving every single performance audit that we have here. That there, also a little further down, that it says, option to inspect school facilities and grounds that are subject to the bond. We don't want them to have to go to all of our buildings, those that are not being subject to the bond. And then again, reviewing quarterly reports about the bond. And then over on the committee side on page three, committee meetings, it says they'll meet quarterly as requested. I think we need to include requests by the school board to meet more, again, at a different time or whatever, so that we can also ask them to come to meeting in addition to the superintendent and district staff.
Okay, we'll capture those coming.
Yeah, those were the, those were the few things that I saw as maybe we might want to think about.
In addition to Director Adkins wanting us to get a little bit more explicit about the public nature of the meetings.
Right.
I guess, I guess I'm not entirely convinced that I'm looking at one sort of method of receiving sort of advice or, or review by, by committee that's better than another. I think there are probably components of both that, that really are, are valuable. The other thing, though, and this sort of popped in my head as you were speaking, Martine, was us fully taking advantage of the, of the sincere interest and participation in this process. And I think that's something that we're seeing from individuals. And I think it's also something, by the way, that, that's going to push, push this bond into, into the wind column, that this is going to be, this kind of excitement and interest and participation is going to be very important to us as we, as we move forward and beyond, beyond this bond. The other, just more technical question is on the last page, I just want to make sure the provision of reports covering the school bond program is something that, that, those are reports that they're going to be giving to the board? Is that right?
Which page are you on with which item?
Four.
Number three. Provision of reports covering, and your question is?
Are those reports that they'll be delivering to the board? Because some sort of report needs to come out of their review, right?
Right. As a, as a result of their quarterly meetings, their review report that would come out to the board, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, okay.
And I, I guess back to the email we received from Stuart Emmons, any notes in here? What they're suggesting is something that they, he had done on numerous large-scale government projects. I think that's, I, I wonder what those numerous large-scale government projects are and what, what we can learn from those. It's sort of, you know, I'm sure this is a process that you all go through, but just as a part of our due diligence, how can we learn from other things? And what are some of the, some of the evidence that said, hey, this was, this was a great way for community to be involved, this didn't work? That could, that could help inform how we go about doing it.
Yeah, I kind of think, I mean, based, because of the, I mean, the long-range facilities plan process being an awesome one, but one that was incredibly time-consuming for staff, as well as the wonderful volunteers on that committee, just think, I mean, just one thought, and I don't know if there's already been discussion about this, but whether it could be sort of an unofficial, community-led group that then had a sort of unofficial liaison, you know, sort of like a, a watchdog group, a friendly watchdog, who wasn't necessarily being staffed by PPS, but then took advantage of the public materials to come up with their own verdict and input and suggestions. So just one thought, and I don't know if there's capacity, because I know it's, it's hard to organize that kind of thing oneself and, and do, but just, I mean, that was one thing that, that I thought of when I read Stuart's email, because it is a question of how much, when you're trying to do the projects right and on budget, on time, and make, that's got, obviously got to be your first priority for your limited staff capacity, as important and wonderful as it is to have whatever, you know, advice committee. But if we're focused on this technical advisory committee, making sure the money's being spent right, the projects are being done well, I'm just wondering if community folks who do have this passion might be, might consider having a, a more of a, you know, self-managed outside role that would report to us in an unofficial way. Just, that was just something that I was wondering if it's something could be considered, so. But I, again, I assume it's an ongoing conversation, this isn't the end of the discussion.
When I, when I look at the memo that we got from our Portland, our schools, and when I heard the testimony today, I mean, the impression I get is that they're generally fine with this technical committee and the idea of a technical committee, and they said it right here, you know, maybe we should look at having a technical committee, but then look at also having a more of a strategic advisory committee. And I think part of what's going on is that we really don't know yet, and we haven't really said yet what the visioning, you know, how the visioning process is going to play out. We haven't really said yet how the 1.5 million dollars will be used as we kind of, you know, look ahead. And again, part of that feels like we're getting a little ahead of ourselves too, that we maybe need to kind of wait for six weeks and make sure we get this thing passed.
Yes.
What we do know is that the Technical Citizen Accountability Committee is mandated by us as part of the bond, and so we need to move forward with that. But I think we should be really clear that we're wide open to the idea that we would also have some other kind of strategic or visionary committee that kind of helps us with partnerships and helps us with, you know, figuring out where we go from here, so.
And actually, I'll say that we've been engaged in the conversation about what this visioning process looks like with our Portland, our schools. So they've been in the conversation about when we're looking at the governor's 40-40-20, when we're looking at just having completed the Portland Plan with a new educational vision at the center of it, and what's the role that Portland Public Schools plays in that context, as well as what is the vision as it relates to facilities, the educational vision, and how do we do a process that does all of the things that we want it to do? We're in that process, we're in that conversation. And some of the staff conversation today, looking at the, what the Stuart Emmons email was, okay, how do we end up using the energy in a way that's most engaging people in the place where we have the best impact without doing duplicative or conflicting kinds of processes? And we don't know how that all fits together yet and how we best structure it, that we end up both accomplishing the transparency and the ability to communicate and the technical oversight. And some of this may be part of, what's the steering committee for the vision process? How does it connect to the RFP we've just done that we will be, okay, how are we doing the vision around the facilities? How does it all fit together? But, but our Portland, our schools folks are in that conversation, the raw conversation with us, so I trust we're going to end up figuring that out. And they're part of the, they're part of that, so.
And so, so I'm assuming that there are other partners of ours that are in that conversation as well?
So what, I will tell you, so the, the conversation about the vision process will ultimately have a group of people who are stakeholder representatives that are part of a steering committee that are guiding that process. But we're not that far along yet, and probably, it's, it is something that won't start until after the election. So it's, you know, it's informative stages right now. Like we know the ingredients of what we want to accomplish, we're trying to do something that streamlines some significantly big processes so that we're not running parallel tracks.
We just, we have many, many.
But we have many stakeholders. Yes, and I will say, we've got a list of, of key stakeholders that are, like, who would form a steering committee that ends up ultimately guiding that process.
Right. I would, if I can just agree with Director. I would, if I can just agree with Director Reagan for a moment. In addition to the visioning process, other things that will come out post-election, assuming the bond is successful, would be an entire bond communications plan, because I know that's part of, so there's a whole series of, of work efforts that are part of the process that emerge from a successful bond effort that will then, I believe, allow people to have a great, greater degree of visibility and perhaps, perhaps trust may be too strong a word, but an understanding of how we're going to go about this work and how we're going to make it visible to the public. And not just the, where the, the public can step in and be part of the process, but also how they can have an ongoing visibility into, say, a project that's under construction, literally. What's the ongoing visibility like on something like that? As regards the dashboard, certainly, you know, project schedule, project budget, all of those things will be readily available. So that's part of the, the work that emerges after the bond is successful. And I think it will make people feel a lot more comfortable once we're in that stage and we can start moving forward on that work.
And just in an effort to, to kind of begin to build that confidence, and I think what Director Morton referenced in regards to, you know, large-scale government projects, perhaps, you know, you can speak to, to either yourself or your staff in terms of that experience that, that you had in regards to carrying out some of those projects? And perhaps can mention some of those two as a way to also, you know, acknowledge that we do have some expertise, that whether we, we say that we are, we are limited on staff and we don't want to, you know, begin to create, you know, committees so that staff spends a whole lot of time just staffing committees and not actually do the, the projects themselves and to implementation. But I also want to acknowledge, you know, some of the work that might be in-house already and, and what the plans are also to draw from others.
And how about if we come back to you with that at another one of your pending work sessions? Okay.
I guess I just also want to remind us, when I, when I hear us talk about a kind of a smaller group or a side group, we have a really engaged citizenry, whether they're neighborhood associations or individuals who take on a passion, or communities who have been traditionally not engaged or we haven't served very well. I just hope that we continue to, to take all of that advice and reach out, that we don't count on a small committee, no matter whether that's seven, whether that's 10, whether that's 100. We, as, as Director Noel said, we have many, many partners, and that really is the whole community. And so I just, I'm excited about the process, but I don't want us to rely on a small group, no matter how big or how many.
Are we done? And we're out on time, by the way, and I thank you both for being here.
We have one more, we have one more item under the bond readiness. Just short, sweetie?
This is a, this is a short one, promise.
We need the PowerPoint up, if AV can help us with that. And you have a hard copy. It's a single slide that Jim will walk you through relative to some action that you'll be taking at your next regular meeting.
So the second subtopic that we have for you tonight, related to bond readiness, is, is an interesting one that, that connects to an opportunity, I think, that, that we have to capitalize on a, on a, a real success story. Portland Public was recently recognized by the State Office of Emergency Management with a 1.5 million dollar reimbursement grant under the state rib, state reputation grant program, seismic reputation grant program. And we, based on the nature of the work at Alameda Elementary, which is significant seismic strengthening to that school, we saw an opportunity to immediately move to bring a design professional architect engineer firm aboard to begin the planning programming, to go through the design process and have the construction documents ready in, in February, March timeframe, so that we'd be able to complete that work over the summer of 2013. The nature of that work happens to very closely align to work that we have included in our proposed bond package at a number of our schools to do re-roofing, to do seismic improvement, accessibility improvements, and some of our science classroom upgrades are, as we've been calling them, educational facility improvements. So as we looked at the, at the whole structure, we thought it would make sense to include in the work scope for the solicitation, the RFP that was sent out to pick up some of the other schools that had high priority roofing and seismic needs. And as you have in front of you and as displayed up on the screen, the other schools actually include a additional work scope at Alameda in order to do the complete roof tear-off and replacement. That would be, that's an actual component that is in our proposed plan that, that is in the, in the bond measure. Bridal Mile is another for re-roofing and some seismic. Laurelhurst K8, which in addition to the roofing and seismic, also has science labs. Lewis, re-roofing and seismic, and then the big project, Wilson High School. And what I'd like to lay out and walk you through is a timeline that depicts really a flexible plan that if the voters approve the bond measure on November 6th, that we would be able, we, we have the team, the design team in place to be able to move the design forward. We essentially, in the early November timeframe, would be able to have those other four schools in a schematic design completion phase. Schematic is really the initial design effort where the, the design team actually connects the work scopes to the budgets and connects some of the, they've done some of the analysis of some of the as-built information and are really starting out on a process that then they can continue with to get, if you will, a jumpstart on the work. The, if the bond is not approved by the voters, then we have an opportunity to immediately stop the work at the schematic design phase. And it won't be lost work. It would be a deliverable, if you will, that staff would have, that we would be able to use at some future time, whether it was a future capital construction bond or whether we had some other fund source that could be used for the work. So it represents an opportunity that I think is, is worth pursuing. I would add that today, we actually received proposals from, from nine firms expressing interest, and it's another indication that our design professional community is, is watching what Portland Public Schools is doing, and there's an interest in, in looking at this very important work that enhances the safety for our students and staff in our buildings.
And creates jobs.
And creates jobs at the same time. That's correct. So what this depicts is, is really a schedule. It's a little bit, a little busy, and I apologize for that, but you can see some of the work scopes and hopefully you can see the connection between the type of the work that's under the OEM seismic grant for Alameda and how it connects to the other schools. So like, take any questions on this, this opportunity?
I think the only thing I would add is that the contract award for this design will be on your September 24th agenda, in the business consent agenda. And so effectively, what we're saying and we'll be teeing up for you in terms of a staff report on the 24th is that if the bond is successful and we want to be able to accomplish construction work in the summer of 2013, this is what we need to do now today in September in order to allow that to happen.
Yeah, I really appreciate that.
That's kind of the short, short form.
I was going to say, I really appreciate that you're balancing this prudent preparation with doing just enough so that it's the right amount, and it's a nice balance. And I think, I hope the voters will appreciate that you're trying to be as ready as possible at, up to a point and then without assuming anything. I guess my only question would be, knowing that there's so many schools that have roofing and seismic needs, can you just talk briefly about how you chose these particular schools to start with?
We, we use a number of measures to determine where our highest priority needs were. And in looking at these schools, these were the ones that were at the, the top of our list in terms of the overall condition. And we worked very closely with the facilities and asset management staff in terms of, in terms of identifying those schools. It also aligned very well with the type of work so that the design team would actually be able to bundle this together. Essentially, the plan is to use a single design professional firm that would develop the construction documents for all, all of these schools. And then to put the, the bidding packages together, or package together, to be able to, to be able to accomplish the work.
So, so these are among the worst of the roofs that have been patched beyond the point where they can be patched anymore?
Correct. And I think adding to CJ's comments, this, if, if the bond is successful on, on November the 6th, this would be the first bite at the apple for us in, in being able to do bond work. And it would continue over successive summers, at least six summers, seven or even eight, since the total program is eight. But staff has, has a plan to be able to capitalize. We have 63 schools that are actually included in the educational and physical facility improvement category that we would want to be able to accomplish over the summer, the principal benefit being to minimize disruption to students and staff. And so this is, this can be accomplished over a three-month period.
We saw a video from, when your counterpart in Salem, who has a bond program, and it was really a neat example of just the intensity of that summertime work period and seeing how, and I'm sure you've, you know, been in communication with them and would be doing a very similar thing of really having this intense focus of just blasting through and getting it done in the summer so there's the least amount of disruption. So it was an exciting example of what, what I hope we will be doing soon every summer.
Well, and when we come back a little bit and talk to you about the blended team that we're proposing, you'll find out that in fact, Jim has been doing this very thing in Beaverton with their bond. And so he's very familiar with what Salem Kaiser is going through because he's been doing that for the last number of summers at, at Beaverton with their bond.
This is actually very typical for school districts because of the unique scheduling requirements. Roof tear-offs and replacements are very disruptive, and you don't want kids, you don't want summer programs in those schools when that work's going on. So another part of the coordination on this work is to coordinate the summer programs that are planned at these sites to be able to divert them to other schools.
That's great. Thanks.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
So we're almost there, folks. Just behind schedule. Next, next item on the agenda was the OSBA Monoma County elections. So at this time, the board has asked for nominations to the Oregon School Board Association's Board of Directors. Director Reagan is currently serving in position nine for the OSBA board, and I'm honored to take this opportunity to nominate her to continue in her role in position 19 on the OSBA board. So I should mention, so at this point, I just want to, you know, voice vote, you know, to...
Second.
Yes. So should Director Reagan be re-elected? Her new term will begin in January 2013, I understand?
Yes.
So I know that Director Belial's going to make a statement on, on this, right?
I was just going to say, I appreciate all the time and effort you put into this organization and representing us. It's such important work for a statewide organization and really helps us work with school districts across the state. And I know you've really, over time, put in so much time and energy to make this an effective organization, so I'm just really happy that you're willing to, to serve.
Thank you, and I'm honored to serve.
And thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
So now we have the business agenda, the, we're now considering the business agenda. Ms. Houston, are there any changes to the business agenda?
Yes.
Do I have a motion, a second, to adopt the business agenda?
So moved.
Director Atkins moves and Director...
A second.
Reagan seconds the option of the business agenda. Is there any citizen comment?
Yeah.
Is there any board discussion on this? The board will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. The business agenda is approved by a vote of six to zero with two in Representative Garcia voting. Yes, thank you. So the next meeting of the board will be a regular session September 24th at 6:00 PM. This meeting is almost adjourned.
Thank you. Just wanted to...
One is that today was the deadline for voter pamphlet statements in support or in opposition. And I understand that there were 15 voter pamphlet statements in support of the Portland Public Schools' capital facilities bond. At this point, we don't know of any in opposition, but they're still checking. So we'll hopefully know that in the morning. But that's a really exciting and pretty resounding statement of support from the community, so I'm really thrilled. And I just want to thank our campaign staff for doing the work of, you know, collecting signatures and everything that you need to do for the actual voter statement. It's a, it's a whole lot of work and they did a nice job. And I also just wanted to mention, as a complete aside, that right before I came here, I checked Facebook, and my niece had changed her Facebook page photo to include her uncle, who died in the World Trade Center, 911. And so tomorrow's the anniversary of that, and it was just a really good reminder for me of that anniversary for our country. And if we have the opportunity, any of us, to thank a fireman tomorrow or thank a police officer, I hope we'll take the opportunity.
Thank you. And just for the public, you know, one of the, the statements that'll be on the, on the board pamphlets is also a, a statement from the, the whole of the board, from PPS, since we are all supporting this bond. And I hope the, the public, you know, continues to express their support and actually work in the campaign. So we're now adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.[1639.41]